Yes.
Yeah. Yeah. Really. My favorite.
I'm just. Yes.
I was feeling whatever that guy was. It's making fast. That's the. Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. I think it's happening now. Yes. Right.
Good morning, everyone. We're gonna bring the meeting to order. And if we can stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, anyone wishing to make public comment on the one item on the agenda that's not on the agenda? Anything not on the agenda, and we only have the review of the proposed career fire staffing. But anyone wish to come forward to make a public comment on any other topic? Okay, save none. We're gonna jump right into item number four, which is a review of the proposed career fire staffing expansion. And I'm gonna turn it over to Carolyn, just for everyone. Just wanna mention that one of our supervisors is, actually both may be on there, but I know Annette is on via Teams. Candace is out of town, but she may be listening in, but she's not gonna actually be able to speak or anything. But I just want to mention in case she happens to join on. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Carolyn, I guess, first.
Certainly. So per the board's request, you have in front of you the most recent fire department proposed budget. It includes four different scenarios for staffing. And Blaine and Bill Wigman and I met on, earlier this week, to go over the numbers again. The ones that are in red in the expenditures are items that have been modified since we last met. Starting with employee benefits, those numbers have gone down because when we discussed further, we realized that the pension was accounted for in there, and the pension actually has its own line item. So that was adjusted as well. Firefighting equipment was adjusted, and Chief Wigman can speak to that. Consulting Services now has the inclusion of a study in there, if that would be the board's directive moving forward in 2026. Vehicle maintenance has been adjusted primarily because we expect to receive the two fire trucks that have been on order this year, which means we won't have as high, but obviously, vehicle maintenance with brand-new equipment. We've adjusted the, as I said, the non-uniform pension fund contribution. You'll see it's the same regardless of how many we hire, because in the first year, employees are not eligible to participate in the pension plan. They have to be here for 12 months before they can participate. So that's why that number's not changing. The 457 contribution is being adjusted to account for the proposed changes in the hires. And then other services and charges, that includes the health screening that would be done for the firefighters, and Chief Wigman can speak to that. There was a question about the training, and the reason the training has stayed the same is because unlike my side of the building, where we register each individual for different training on the fireside, it's trained by groups. So when the chief arranges for training, he pays a speaker to come in or a trainer to come in, regardless of whether there's 10 in the room or 50 in the room. So that's why that number has stayed the same. The result is the millage would still be what we had proposed originally, which is .3 mils if we were doing five per shift with zero hires right now. An increase of one mil, which would be seven hires. But I believe, and Chief can correct me, that that would assume a 2448 schedule, not a 2472. The five per shift with 11 hires and... 2472, okay, thank you, Bill. The 11 hires would also be 2472. And then the 15 hires, which was Chief's original proposal last fall, would be...
Is now joining.
Would be 2472 as well. So the millage has not changed, the recommended millage, to make sure that the balance, the budget would be balanced. However, we did go through the numbers and we modified them where need be. So at this point, if you have questions specifically about any of the numbers, Chief Wigman, Mr. Berg, your eye can do our best to answer them, and then the board can open it up for your discussion amongst yourselves and certainly take public comment. Thank you. The copies that are in front of you that have numbers in red are the most recent after... And then we met again yesterday just to make sure that we were in agreement with everything before we printed them out for you.
Okay. Any questions?
One of the questions that I had before was about the projected fund balance for the end of year for 2025. It's projected as $779,459. Is that...
That's through 1031. When you take the remaining two months of the year, November and December, Finance Director is estimated, we will have a beginning fund balance of $500,000.
So, you know, I'm curious about what in the next, you know, 30 days we're going to spend, you know, $279,459 exactly on.
Well, we have two months of salaries and expense offset by whatever comes in with earned income tax and higher expenses.
That's just a rough estimate, that's about where it will be.
Because normally, the starting balance would be, you know, whatever the projected ending balance is, and based on how this is labeled, it's just a little misleading. It just seems unusual that it would be a flat number. It's big.
Unusual it would be a flat, well, I mean, it'd be impossible to get it down to the dollar. So I just kinda estimated a rough ending balance.
Okay, I was just...
I mean, I can't try to be more exact, if you want, but...
Well, you know, trying to get a better picture of the finance, the financials around that particular fund, anyway.
I have a question about the consulting services. It looks as if there is a recurring fee of $65,000 each year.
Here, it's under each scenario.
Oh, each scenario, gotcha.
I'm sorry. If you look at the top, you'll see the different scenarios are spelled out.
Yeah.
Okay. It says, it says the budget, and then it tells you how many hires. So that would not change, that's not dependent on...
I just wanna make it clear, that's a one-time fee. Okay, great.
So is that number, it increases from, it was 37.5 in the last version in the three scenarios except for zero hires. So what's rolling into that number now?
The 37.5 was the building expansion feasibility study and hiring expenses. So we moved hiring expenses down to the last line there in the section, 411, 480. And then consulting services is now the feasibility study plus the overall fire study.
So in the comprehensive fire study...
So it's 47.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Wouldn't that encompass a building feasibility or no, as a part of that scope of work?
My understanding was the scope was sort of talking about location of a building and the feasibility of having two stations versus one.
The way I read it, and it's been a while now, it didn't include like looking at the interior of the building and saying, if you put a new building up, what does it need to contain? Or if you keep these stations, what needs to change there? I can reevaluate it and go back and see if it does in fact spell out that they would identify basically like what an architect would in terms of the, you know, existing structure or a new design. If it does, then we would take that 20 out.
I think, Carolyn, I think you're correct. I think the overall fire service study would focus on, are the buildings sufficiently located for the maximum response time? And is, are, do we need more buildings, do we need less buildings? Whereas the feasibility study for the station would be done by an architect that would look at, how do we design a building that meets all code standards and works with the building that we have now? So I think it's two different scopes of work, and that's why they were added together. Because one would be with a fire safety consultant, and the other one would be probably with an architect. And we looked at, we interviewed three architect firms when, and just to get some rough ideas of what that would cost.
And what, and what was that cost, Chief? Like just that piece of it?
Well, it depended on the three firms. I think one was $10,000, one was $37,000, and the other one was $115,000. That was just for the RFP, for the building architect, to look at how we can improve Battalion One. And we also did some things without an architect where we got estimates as to how much it would cost just to change the bunk rooms around a little bit, just in case we wanted to make it more comfortable for our people. So we really spent the last 12 months exploring various options and various grant opportunities, depending which way the board wanted to go.
Because I think the all-encompassing one, and I'm kinda tagging on to you, Tanya, on this, was 47.5. I thought it was looking at infrastructure, but again, without going back to it, I'm not 100% sure on that. But possibly not to the level of what you're speaking about.
I, I think the difference would be infrastructure and building design.
Gotcha.
I think infrastructure, we definitely look at infrastructure as far as how our municipalities laid out, traffic patterns, populations, I mean, and we kinda do that already when we look at our GIS dashboard and you see our heat map, where we highlight where our most areas of most of our common calls are. But they would look at that and figure out response times, stations, combination, that type of thing. But I, I may be wrong. I didn't see architectural costs in any of the, maybe I just missed it, but I didn't see it.
It seems like the, like any building feasibility study of that nature would be contingent on the results of the comprehensive fire study that we do and the needs assessed and the recommendations coming out of that one. So is it, and if we add the 20,000 estimated that was originally proposed, and the, you know, the 47.5 that we had a quote in-house for, for the comprehensive fire study, it's 67.5. If we did them both in that next year, in, I'm sorry, in the 2026 budget cycle. Also, I'm, I'm confused about the overtime estimates. I'm trying to find that line on now then.
That would be the bottom of page one, from Section 411. It's 03411180 overtime.
Right. So it, it's jumping up significantly with seven hires. When we had discussed this previously, the overtime that was estimated with 11 full-time firefighters on staff was based on 11 firefighters doing the work of what, you know, you had proposed in terms of the schedule for 24 to be doing. And that would require mandatory overtime. That overtime estimate is still in here. You know, can you speak to how you're justifying that overtime in a scenario where it seems like that's not a realistic work schedule to expect 11 people to work?
So the original scenarios that I was seeing, that we were seeing for the overtime and the phasing in of the expansion was creating massive amounts of overtime because it was assuming, like the first proposal was 19 hires. So the original phasing in proposals that we are getting had massive amounts of overtime because it was kind of assuming you'd fill it up with 19. You would fill up to the full 19 staffing with overtime. And it was just making the whole thing more expensive. So kinda once I, yeah, I was working on the budget a little bit and got my feet under me here in the new position, I came up with these scenarios of fewer firefighters, basically, still enabling four on a shift, 2472s, but trying to cut down on the overtime. So I came up with what seemed like, and talked it over with Bill, what seemed like reasonable amounts of overtime that the firefighters might be willing to do, and kinda trying to match overtime with part-time in a way that made sense. And when it was seven, so for the seven-hire scenario, that's seven hires, we have five guys currently, so that's 12, would only be three on a shift. So you're filling up an entire extra firefighter on every single shift with overtime and part-time. And that's why those numbers are so much higher in that scenario. So then when you go to like 11, you have a full-time person, so you don't need so much overtime and part-time. It's just kinda trying to find a balance of a reasonable amount of overtime that might work and a reasonable amount of part-time workers that might be available. So that's why, that's why I like the tax increase between 7 and 11 is relatively low, from one mil to 1.15, because you're getting rid of a lot of overtime and part-time by doing that. Paying more in benefits, but paying a lot less in overtime and part-time.
So if you take the wages, full-time, part-time, and overtime, under the proposal for seven hires, it's $2,154,200. If you take the next scenario with 11 hires, the total of those three lines is $2,196,500. And the third scenario, which was the 15 hires, was $2,402,200. So to Blaine's point, under the scenario for seven hires and 11 hires, they're about $42,000 difference. It's just how it's accounted for in, whether it's overtime or whether it's in full-time wages or part-time wages.
So the more people you hire, the less overtime and part-time you need, but the more benefits...
But the higher the base wage as well for full-timers. And then benefits would reflect that as well, because full-timers are offered the benefits.
I just, you know, I'm, I'm feeling like we are not phasing in the work, you know, that we're expecting, you know, the additional staff and current staff to pick up additional hours in this scenario. You know, we're, we're more than doubling the staff and we're, and yet we're experiencing exponentially more overtime in, in this process, so something just doesn't seem to compute. I mean, we still have volunteers, we still have stipend shifts, we still have part-time. You know, why are, why are those costs not, or are those sort of resources not factored in here?
So currently, the guys work 10-hour shifts, moving to 24-hour shifts, which will, which will generate more work hours. The other question about volunteers and stipend and all those things, you know, I think NFPA and OSHA with their two-in, two-out policy says that the minimal you need on a shift is four, right? That's the minimum. I have...
Excuse me, can you just, just for everybody's benefit, explain two in and two out?
Yeah, yeah.
We know it, but everybody else might not...
OSHA, OSHA says that if two people are, for every two people that you have in a fire, you need two people on the outside in case they get in trouble, that they could hopefully go in and get them. What we know about firefighters and getting in trouble in fires and rapid intervention teams is it really takes about 15 firefighters to rescue one firefighter. But OSHA has the standard that two-in, two-out. NFPA says the minimum on an engine is four. I had given you other scenarios based on NFPA for industrial settings and command and control and all, but the minimum would be four, right? So right now, we have five on a shift, and they're working 10-hour shifts. If we move to four on a shift, to a 24-hour shift, that'll generate the more work hours, which, you know, if we, if we, if we increased our part-timers, we wouldn't obviously have them doing 24-hour shifts. We'd probably have them doing 12-hour shifts, so people could come from other jobs. The area of concern, and I know we've talked about it numerous times, and again, we have really, really good volunteers, is those response times. And we talked about, you know, NFPA says 15 people had to structure a fire at the 90th percentile, right? And why does NFPA recommend the 90th percentile? And why is that used by accreditation and staffing studies and fire department studies? Because the 90th percentile does not allow for the hiding of the extreme responses, right? So when I tell you the volunteers' average is nine minutes, that is the average, right? That's not the length or the longest, right? So I just wanted to give you just a quick snapshot in 2025 of where we are in the 90th percentile. All right, so I'm only looking at 175 calls, that's it, all right? And that's for this year, and it does not include calls where the engine does not respond, all right? So out of that 175 calls, 25% of our calls were over 10 minutes. Twenty, one-fourth were over 10 minutes. 37% were over nine minutes. We had 66 recalls, meaning the chief got there and recalled the assignment, that's 38%. So when you're looking at calls over nine minutes and recalls, for the 175 calls that we had in 2025, we're at 74%. That's way higher than the 10% we're allowed. But let's look at some of the extremes. Dwelling fire in town, 15 minutes and 6 seconds. Dwelling fire in town, 14 minutes and 33 seconds. Building fire in town, 12 minutes and 19, 16 minutes, 45 seconds, 18 minutes and 51 seconds, right? Vehicle rescue, 12 minutes, elevator rescue, 12 minutes, another one for 11. When we look at the scratches, the calls we did not respond to that had to be covered by other companies, we have a cardiac arrest, we have a building investigation, which means there's an odor of something burning, but they're, they don't see smoke or flames. And when I look, and we have four AFA's and a special, fire alarms and a special service. When I look at our mutual aid calls that we didn't respond to in that timeframe, we didn't go to a dwelling fire in Horsham, we didn't go to a dwelling fire in Warrington, and we didn't go to a building fire in Hatfield, because we couldn't make the response. So I know how important response times are, but I wanted to bring up that 90th percentile because I think that gives a greater picture of where we're at. And again, it's only a sample size of 175, but the trending through the data I provided you shows that the trending is not good. I am asking at this point for 11, because that is the bare minimum standard by NFPA and by OSHA. And I understand, throw more money at stipend, throw more money at part-timers. I get that, we've talked about why I don't think the part-timer thing is appropriate because of the reliability and the crew integrity and running a department on all part-timers, which Upper Moreland right now is doing, is not beneficial to the overall crew integrity and, and, and really the return on investment. When we look at stipend, Vinay and I... Um, when we look at stipend, Vinay and I sent a stipend survey out to the members. When we talked about increasing stipend hours to daytime weekends and increasing the funding, uh we only gained one person. Uh, there were like, I think, thirty-six people who responded to the survey. Twenty-eight said that they would continue to do stipend, twenty-nine said they would do it on the weekend. So I understand stipending as a stop-gap measure. We've been doing this stop-gap measure for twenty-some years. Uh, we've increased the funding to a hundred dollars a shift. We're still having issues with filling the stipend calendar. Um, so I'm asking for the bare minimum, and I'm asking, um, and I and I don't want to get rid of the volunteers. I I think that's been clear. I I I want to be a true combination department and really, um, out of all of the combinations in Montgomery County, uh, I can say that we're we're a true combination department, that we don't just have volunteers in name only. And that's definitely highlighted by the fact that we're hosting a firefighter one class in-house. So I want to be, Tanya, you had mentioned that when you go to Pell Raz, you've known this has been an issue for years, right? Volunteers declining. I want to be able to say, we fixed it in Montgomery Township. I don't want to say, hey, you know, and and I get, I understand that maybe nineteen was too much of an ask, I get that. Um, I was looking at it as a firefighter's firefighter, we look at command and control, and and maybe we can phase that nineteen. I don't know, may that, maybe that's the plan, phase that nineteen over a couple of years, several years. Um, and we could still do the phasing approach. But what I'm asking for is that we continue to look at having the bare minimum as four on a shift, um, which would necessitate the eleven people higher. And I understand that's doubling or tripling, but I also think that return on investment-wise, that's the best for the taxpayer. It's going to cut down on the workman's comp claims, it's going to cut down on all of those other things that happen when you don't take care of your employees. A better employee makes a better department, a better department makes a safer community. So so it all, it all, it all fits nicely together. But again, when we look at that eleven and we look at twenty-four seventy-two's, um, obviously, seven would be less with the workers' comp and the insurance and all of those types of things. But we would have to constantly try to backfill with part-timers um and overtime. Because the one thing that we have found, and I think I might have told you this in one of our meetings, is um, we have a great group of part-timers, uh, we have fourteen, really, really twelve. Uh, we had one person who was on military deployment who just got back and and one who has other family situations going on. But when they cancel, then we're down. So I think the only time that we've paid overtime to come in for shifts, I think we have four now this year, uh, which is great from where we used to be when I first started, but um has been because a part-timer has called out at the last minute. So when you're trying to run a public safety department, um, consistent staffing is is one of those things is super important for not only how we respond in our customer service and and public safety, but also for the employees.
I think um just to touch back um to what Tanya was just asking about with regard to the overtime. So each of the scenarios, of course, not the first one because it's zero hires, with seven hires, eleven hires, or fifteen hires, it's taking into consideration, and I think that's why, at least this is what made sense to me, why that overtime figure was so high at seven hires, but you're already implementing the new process. So the, you know, implementing the new um per uh fi- five per shift, five per shift or?
Four.
Four.
Four, but twenty-four forty-eight on that line.
Twenty-four seventy-two's.
On that for, on the seven hires?
Yes.
Oh, okay, I thought it was, I thought it was twenty-four forty-eight on that one, and then the other two were twenty-four seventy-two.
Oh, we we made it consistent across all all scenarios.
So I think, but and Tanya, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm thinking, you're thinking if we hire seven, we may not necessarily go right into the new.
Twenty-four seventy-two.
Right, and so then, oh, it it's kind of like the way it is today, but you've now just brought on additional team and.
Well, the way it is today is is ten-hour shifts. Um, and the reason we set up for the twenty-four seventy-two's, I mean, Upper Marion, I mean, they're they're a really great department, and they have been doing this, and they've had some guidance. Uh, they do twenty-four seventy-two's, North Hampton does twenty-four seventy-two's, Newtown is trying to get to twenty-four seventy-two's. Upper Moreland, I think, is trying, so the trending is everybody's going to the twenty-four seventy-two, which has been proven to be the best for the employee.
Right.
Uh, mental health, all those things we talked about before.
Yeah, I was just trying to, I I was just, I think, trying to help.
Right, and the other thing is, is our union would is totally in agreement with twenty-four seventy-two's and not in agreement with the twenty-four forty-eight schedule. So when we think about opening the contract, because we will have to open the contract now, under the current request for eleven, we're not creating any new positions. So we don't have to talk about salaries or battalion chiefs, we don't have to talk about what this means for the on-call fire marshal, because we'll have to keep the on-call fire marshal. So really, the only thing that we're going to be opening the contract for, I think, is work schedule. And I I can't speak for the union, uh, obviously, but I would assume that if they got the work schedule they want, it would be easier than, well, you know, you're going to give us a work schedule that we don't want, so what are you going to give us in return? I don't know what the fallout with that would be monetarily and what they would ask.
Have you consulted with Labor Council on this?
On?
On any of these scenarios?
So I haven't.
They would be involved.
I haven't consulted, I have not, but what I have done is run um court case precedent on the change of work sca- schedule against employees, union, collective bargaining units, and there's been two cases recently. One from the Salton Valley, um, which was would be the closest where the employer just changed the work schedule and said, we have the right to change the work schedule, uh, the employees grieved it and the grievance was upheld.
Well, that's another thing that I would advise, you know, as we're pursuing this process.
I could certainly do that.
Our our Labor Council has always advised us that if it is enumerated in the contract, any changes to it would have to be negotiated with the union. We could not arbitrarily change it. So for example, if you have health insurance and you call out a specific plan in your contract, regardless of whether it's the provider changing it or the municipality changing it, it would have to be negotiated. And that's what I've always, so our Labor Council, the Labor Councils, when we've attended the annual conference on Pell Raz, they have all said the same thing. If it's enumerated, you do not, it is not a management right, you have to renegotiate. You would have to put a letter to the union saying that you were going to reopen the contract to discuss that point.
Thanks, um, I just establishing that we have not consulted with Labor Council on this particular uh on any of these scenarios and that my uh hope moving forward as we move toward expansion would be that we would consult with Labor Council um to ensure that we've covered all of our bases.
He'll be in the office this afternoon, so I'll speak to him about this.
Wonderful. So one of the things that has been pointed out is that we've had declining volunteerism. I um I heard Lee at our last meeting mention that there were thirty-two checks that had been cut in, I guess, the end of twenty twenty-four for uh thirty-two active firefighters. So firefighters and fire police that received those or just firefighters? Volunteers? Just fire, okay.
To the station doesn't necessarily determine where they live.
Um, I think, uh, you know, the cyber program, it seems like um it's been effective. Would the volunteers agree that that is an effective program? That 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 additional five hundred dollars that we pay out to the active?
I I will tell you right now, um, that when I looked at the active member sheet that Vinay provided me for this coming volunteer election cycle, that when we look at firefighters who have interior fire one and live in town, we have eleven. And yeah, their average age is fifty-one, and that's the most recent out of November. So would I say that the tax incentive is um?
Eleven and nine officers, right? So a total of?
No, no, eleven altogether with the officers. It's eleven altogether. Uh, our officers, not all of them live in town. Uh, Brandy lives in Chauffant, Rachel lives in North Wales, Bob lives in Hilltown, Kunsink lives in town. Millivoy lives in Lansdale, Siddy lives in town, Stump lives in Horsham, Justin lives in Hilltown, I live in town, and Adam lives in town. So eleven.
So the.
So it's a great benefit, thank you, the five hundred dollars, I mean, it's a lot better than what we used to get the way it was first calculated. I think more importantly, the volunteers were excited about the school district tax rebate because that's the highest percent of the tax. And most of them have said that that has been the most impactful is the school district. The county one has been great, that's up to a hundred percent, the school district. I'm actually not sure if it was approved, but I think it it's slated to be approved, um, which is great. Um, and again, we still do our paid-for call, paid-for training, we have a federal safer grant for that. Um, so even with all those programs, we only have eleven active members that live in town that have fire one.
So I'm I'm curious to know if we have done a survey of the people who have um changed their status from active to, you know, like they fall below the the threshold to be considered active and receive one of those uh checks. Has there been any outreach to them for feedback to survey them?
Not this year. Uh, we have done a comprehensive departmental survey in the past, um, but not this year. But I mean, we are in constant contact with our members all the time to encourage them to come out. Um, and again, uh, we are, our recruitment and retention committee um runs several events a year just for members. I mean, we've been at a couple, uh, we've had other events um to get people to come out, and nobody has said, I'm not coming out because I don't like the place. I mean, the feedback we hear is, I just don't have the time.
So you haven't received directly any complaints from any members, you know?
Direct them to me?
Yes.
No, have not. About any of this expansion, is that is that what you're asking?
Um, no, about uh the environment and why why they may or may not be um turning out on calls.
No, I have not. I mean, um, I have, I saw on Facebook when a member posted something about the leadership team, but that member did not speak to me directly. Um, so no member has come into my office and been like, Bill, you're not doing things correctly, you should change it. Now, when we did this survey two or three years ago, I think two years ago now, um, we specifically asked about the leadership of the department. Um, and there were some areas for me to improve. Uh, I'll tell you that the one comment was, sometimes Bill can be a little condescending. Um, so I've been working on that. Uh, but I mean, when you're in a leadership role, sometimes people aren't going to be happy, but I'm dealing with people's lives and uh we have to make decisions to keep everyone safe. But no member has come in and sat down with me recently and said anything. The, again, the only feedback I've seen about the leadership team uh has been on Facebook. So now, I don't know if the other chiefs have gotten any feedback, but I have not. I actually um have received positive feedback from several volunteers in writing about the expansion. But again, nobody in our department has come to me and said, this is terrible, you're running out the volunteers. And since I presented this to our department last November, uh, and it's been on our agenda every month, and obviously it ramped up, uh, and to the fact that the point where the signs in front of the department have expansion info, uh, nobody has come in and said, this is terrible. Uh, the uh most of the feedback I've gotten, and I I think I shared this with you before, is uh, is, does that mean the end of the stipend program? Because I'm tired of giving up my Friday nights, so. Um, I have heard grumblings uh that were after the last board meeting. People had thought that you approved the hiring at our department, uh, not the November one, the October one. Uh, so I did reaffirm them at the November meeting that no decisions were made yet. Uh, and I would tell you that on the agenda, June, July, August, from from November to June, it was a standing career staff update. From June till now, it's been expanded to include all the podcasts, all the presentations, the town halls. I mean, for members, they could have come out to the town hall, several of them did. Um, they could have come to a board meeting, several of them have. I think Rachel spoke to you um at a very early on at a board meeting, so obviously the volunteers knew what was going on. Um, but again, nobody has come into the office and challenged me or said they were not happy.
Have you gotten an email about questioning it at all?
No, no email, no. I mean, if you're referring to the one person, I've never heard from him directly.
Okay.
Um, in fact, uh, you know, he was told in an email from Vinay that I have here, and I'll get it for you. And the email was sent on Sunday, November ninth at one oh three P M. Vinay's response was, you can be either in favor or against, you are a member of the department and a township resident, so I can't tell you how to vote. I would ask that if you are be against and plan to speak on that behalf, you just let Bill know. That's in writing. And that's consistent, what we told our members. We did say to our members, hey, if you have a problem with this and you want to go to a board meeting, that's fine. I appreciate that, you're a taxpayer, just give us a heads up so I can, if you, if the board has any questions, I can be prepared to answer. That's it. We have never discouraged anybody in our organization from coming to a board meeting. I've never replied to any of the things on social media uh about our leadership team. Like I I just, unless you want to come in and talk and be part of the problem to fix it, you know, you want to complain about the leadership team? Get on a fire truck. You want to complain about a leadership team, run for a leadership position. I think all of our positions are either vacant or unopposed at this time for the elections. So there are opportunities to make a positive change in the place. Um, you know, we have recruitment and retention, we have membership committee. Um, so there are opportunities for volunteers to get involved and help. But remember, just remember, the more things you're involved with, the more time you're giving, then you're expected to come to calls, you're expected to do stipend, you know, so it all adds up. I mean, when I think about it, how many times has anybody in this room left their house last month unannounced? How many times did you just say to your your loved ones, hey, I gotta go, I'll be back? We asked our volunteers to do it forty-three times. We asked our volunteers to do that forty-three times last month. So, um, but again, as far as feedback, if 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 we want to send another survey out, we can, but I have sent email after email about if you have anything, come in and see me and talk. I mean, there there's, there's no turning anybody away. We are trying to get volunteers.
I'm looking over at you, Tanya. Any other questions on numbers? Um, or looking for further expla- um explanation on numbers?
I think that the, you know, I'm I'm happy to see that the um the comprehensive fire study is included in the budget and uh in the various different scenarios, because I think that that is going to be a critical part of this process. Uh, what concerns, and what concerns me is that in in these scenarios, especially in like a phased scenario, like with the seven additional hires, that we've um, we've made certain assumptions based on schedule, based and and based on the amount of overtime. Um, the uh projection for which, you know, would be continued on, the scheduling decision, a decision that hasn't been made yet. And and I think a lot of information would, coming out of that comprehensive fire study would uh sort of dictate the direction that we might go with this, so um, you know, at this point.
I I I think.
So can I just say this, it it, I mean, it, that's all we have are scenarios. Even if a consultant, we had a staffing, they're going to give us suggestions based on their scenario, what they think, you know, may occur. And nobody's going to have hard data on anything because we are um looking at, you know, different um examples of staffing, and all we have to go on are assumptions.
But but if we go to eleven and they say, you know what, you could do seven plus volunteer and stipend, I don't know how you dial back?
No fire, no fire service study is going to say less than four. And no fire service study is going to tell. And no fire service study is going to tell you to rely on volunteers. Because NFPA is going to tell you that it has to be consistent staffing, the minimal is four. So if we did a comprehensive fire study, which, I mean, why not? If, if that's what we want to do, and we talk about buildings and departments and strategic plans, I'm all in, that's awesome, let's do it. Maybe it'll tell us we need one new building, maybe it'll tell us we need to hire fourteen people, I don't know. But I do know that the minimum they're going to tell us we need to have is four. So if we wanted to do the comprehensive study next year, I would ask, please just give me the four people, and then if we can phase up from there, that's fine. I guess the decision that, that you would have to make, what you are making as a board is, the, the staffing schedule, right? Are you okay with twenty-four seventy-two, or do you want the twenty-four forty-eight? Because it's a less, it's one less person. And I'm just asking that you strongly consider the twenty-four seventy-two because of how much we've already invested in our employees, how it's been proven to be a better schedule for firefighters, how townships that are leaders in this area, like Upper Marion, are already doing the twenty-four seventy-two. And I don't think, if we get a study done, you know, they may say you can stick with twenty-four forty-eights, or they may say you should go with the national trend to twenty-four seventy-two. But, I mean, the lowest minimum number of staffing on a fire truck is four. I'm sure there's municipalities out there that are doing less, because they can't just afford it, or they. But the minimum standard is four, and if somebody gets hurt, or, I mean, we should do the best for our people, and we're saying the minimum standard is four. So that's why I think the eleven makes more sense, because we're guaranteeing four. And if we want to look at cutting down overtime on the eleven, then we could keep that part-time shift. And if we fill it, we fill it, if we don't, we don't, but we're going to keep our part-timers engaged, but also to, to backfill.
I didn't have any further questions about it, if you wanted to open it up for a public comment.
That's what I was just getting ready to do, so at this time, if anyone would like to come forward with public comment, if you can just state your name, and if you live, if you're a resident here in the community or outside of the community. You don't have to say your full address.
Hi, my name is Denise Seshelman, I live in Montgomery Township. Been here for over eight years. I was at the last meeting and voiced some concerns, I don't know what the right answer is, it's a tough job y'all have. I want to thank you specifically, Mrs. Bamford, Ms. Bamford, for your due diligence, for asking questions regarding both staffing and regarding where the money's at. I'm kind of a math money person, so I appreciate that. I think I just, I sometimes feel, I don't come to a lot of township, I don't come hardly ever to a township meeting. The thing that prompted me to come to the one the other night was this card. I don't think I live like an ostrich with my head in the sand, but maybe I do, and maybe a lot of people in the township do. But when you start seeing the dollar signs, then sometimes your head pops out of the sand. So when I saw this card and I saw the millage rate, and I did the calculation, it made my head pop out, out of the sand and said, hmm, maybe I should go to this township meeting, maybe I should go to all of them. So maybe I should. But I think the one big thing to take away from this is the communication issue. Even though y'all said, you brought it up in October of twenty-four, April of twenty-five, June of twenty-five, you probably brought it up in a township meeting or a special meeting that takes place on a ten A M. on a Friday morning when most people, including myself, would be working. I don't know when these meetings happened, I have no clue. I own part of it, but I also don't think money was well spent on flashing signs and horsing saying there's a change going on in the fire company. That doesn't mean everything to people when you say, hi, your taxes going up by forty-seven point six percent, come on down to a meeting. People are going to go, whoa, wait a minute, maybe I should come, maybe I shouldn't ignore that flashing sign, like, oh, that's nice, they're working on it, I'm trusting they'll work on it and fix it all for us, because that's their job and my job, something else. So I just say in the future, maybe this postcard would have been nice, six months before y'all voted on the consultant, six months before it came to a head where it's all going to be a done deal by December, probably, and voted on. So I hope, as a taxpayer, as a township resident, that in order for the public to trust in decisions made by a board such like this or a chief, I'd, I'd like that communication maybe a little bit more concrete or in a different way. I don't listen to podcasts, I'm not a radio person, I don't know. I, I don't even hardly listen to TV anymore, because most of the news is just disgusting on either side. I don't really trust pretty much either side. But I, I trust concrete things, and we obviously want to be safe, we obviously want a reliable fire department, we want them to be happy. But I'm also a little confused about the whole staffing thing. If I could analyze the numbers for the next couple of months, maybe I'd have it figured out, but I'm not going to do that. I know that it would be very difficult to try and intermesh volunteerism with part-time, with full-time. And I get it, like, if I was running something that wanted to make my life easy, I would just say, forget it, and just hire all full-time, because that would make my life easy, and then I know I had reliable help and respond to the community in time. That's not always the reality we live in, we have to kind of walk the line between reliable help and getting the public safe and the money that they're spending, so this is a tough job, and I recognize that. But I'm hoping in the future, the communication is somehow for regular old people like me, who sometimes have their head stuck in the sand until it pops up at a forty-seven percent, point six percent change, which granted is nothing compared to the school taxes that went up exorbitantly and will, will drive people out of those homes. So I'm just hoping that somehow in the future, we can figure out how to get these kind of things out in a way that gets the average Joe like me informed, so they come out and have input. Because I don't do this much, I just don't. And, and it's like, if you have eleven full-time people hired, how does that intermesh with the volunteers? Are you not counting on the volunteers at all to show up? Like, I don't know what that means, like, if you hire, you know, if you hire the, the seven, then how many volunteers would you need or part-time people, if you hire the eleven, how many volunteers does intermesh? Or is it hiring the eleven that frees you from relying on volunteers at all, or hiring the fifteen? So now you don't have to worry about volunteers or part-time, like, it's not really crystal clear to me what all these numbers mean. So if it's not crystal clear to me, when I got As in math all through every single level I've gone through, which is a lot. It can't be clear to the average Joe in our community. So anyway, please, in the, in the future, find a way of reaching the average Joe like me, who doesn't listen to podcasts, who doesn't always come to a township meeting, and maybe I should from now on, and that onus is on me. Yeah, I think that's about it, and thank you for your service.
Thank you, Denise.
Thank you.
Good morning, Stan Lascones, township resident, also a small business owner. Mostly a general comment here, I'm kind of playing off the last speaker. You know, general observation about the lack of consistent and timely updates concerning a board decision that is so financially impactful to this community. Posting the special meeting notice or announcement in a classified ad appears to limit community engagement and resolving feedback evidenced by today's low turnout by the community. I also wanted to add, the fact is that the, the indication for real estate, the millage, that increase that would result from this financial decision by this board sent out so close to the election, not well in advance, so people can consume it and think about the options that are available, and potentially change their voting pattern, right, who they're looking to, to elect in this, based on this decision. I guess my last and final comment was, the, and correct me if I'm wrong, the lack of, of support for a comprehensive plan for what this really means as far, for the community, as far as the financial obligations of, of residents. My, my role, my, my private business is, is as an architect, systems architect, and a roadmap is certainly appropriate. And what I mean by roadmap is really understanding what your outlays are going to be, how you're going to staff the, the fire company, and what additions you need to make potentially to the infrastructure over time, instead of going all in for, you know, one observation or one belief that we need to hire eleven firemen initially, instead of looking this over a long-term plan and seeing how you're going to staff and how you're going to fund this. So that's all I have to say at this point, I appreciate your time and effort and your efforts around this in particular.
Thank you, Stan. You said Stan, right?
Neil Franklin, I live at three twelve Stump Road. For those who maybe see me, I was here at the last meeting on Monday to help support this fire company. The reason I'm here today is to clarify a couple of things. We moved in in eighty-three in December, and in March, I joined the Comer Fire Company, who used to be at the Stump Road Station, when you people used to contract us for your firefighting protection. Then when you decide to go out on your own, which was good, I stayed with Comer because I wanted to get my life membership. And been with them ever since, only because I found out that if you belong to two companies, you cannot support the main one you belong to. So I wish I could be a member here, but I probably couldn't give as much to this community as I do still with Comer. So I know the response time, when my alarm goes off, it takes me fifteen minutes to get to Comer, which mostly I carry my own gear with me now, and I'll respond right to the call. But the reason I'm also talking is, prior to coming here, I used to belong to another fire company. And we used to send out donation letters to help with the financing of that company. I belonged to that company for twelve years. So meanwhile, when we got this in the mail, the wife and I looked up our taxes for Montgomery Township. We figured out what the one point four mil rate would be. And to us, as a single member or resident of the township, that is like a donation to the fire company. And I believe it's also going to help the community with twenty-four seven. The response time is actually, say, zero at the firehouse, because the people are already there. So it's whatever it takes for them to jump on the truck and go to the call is much more quicker than if they weren't in the firehouse. To me, that makes sense, because I only live three houses down from Stump Road Station, so I know them guys are getting there in less than two minutes if I would happen to call them, which hopefully I don't have to, but knowing they're there for any reason, I would need them. So I support the chief and what he wants to do, because still belonging to Comer, I know what it's like to have us just as a full volunteer company, the response time and what it takes. So I support him, thank you very much.
Thank you, Neil.
Anyone else?
I'm Al Lozardo, one nineteen Embassy Drive, I've been here before, y'all know me. I've got a lot of questions, and hopefully I can do this in a little bit of a dialogue. Looking at the proposed budget, there's a department three sixty charges for services, what are those specifically? It's a revenue stream, I'm just trying to understand what that revenue stream is from. So we're, we're expecting that we'll be able to do more, and we're going to draw, go from.
We're, we're at ninety-eight thousand in October, so it's not really projecting more.
Okay. But you had budget, only budgeted fifty thousand in the original twenty-five budget, so I'm just trying to understand why so low a number in twenty-five, and then somehow did you just get out there?
I don't know, I, I wasn't here for that. I can, I can explain that to you. You know, when I first got here, we weren't really doing inspections, we were hitting the same businesses every year. And when we started hitting every business in town, it was taking us three years to get through the town, then it took us two years. So the reason why that's flat across every scenario is because right now we're business out. Andrew has gotten the crew to every business in town annually. So unless we have a massive building of new businesses and occupancies, the fire inspections are the fire inspections.
Great, glad that y'all can do that. Then jumping down into the expenditures, the communications goes up from nineteen thousand to thirty-seven thousand, what's tied into that?
I'm assuming that that would be staff tablets, smartphones, and, you know, we're looking at not giving every staff their own tablet or computer system. They would share based on their, where they are, it'd be more of a bullpen approach, where A shift would use the same equipment as B shift, but that is put in by our communications department as what they would expect we would need if we went to twenty-four seven operations.
Okay. Then let me jump down to fire protection. It looks like y'all have broken out full-time, part-time, overtime and stipend program. There were no numbers budgeted in twenty-five, and I'm trying to understand why there wouldn't have been.
It was all included in the four eleven, one twelve line, the first one. And it's not called full-time, I just broke them out for the budget, so it could say.
So my next question is, my understanding is with the full-time firefighters, you're going to have twenty-four hour coverage. So then, why do you still need to rely on part-time and volunteers? I know you want to, but if they're going to be there at ten minutes after the call, and your original, and your staff firefighters are going to show up in five minutes, are you even going to pull the volunteers into that? And if so, why does the number go up so high for that time period?
So I can answer, there's a couple of things, all right? Number one, the number went up so high because we changed the stipend payment from fifty dollars a shift to a hundred dollars to a shift. So right now, and when a member, so we're paying six people every night, six hundred dollars a night for the stipend program. That is a great question, what to do with stipend, and don't think I haven't thought about it over and over again. Part of me, but that's a board direction. Part of me says we keep stipend because we're guaranteed to get a ladder truck on the street. So when somebody said, what are you going to do with the volunteers? Well, the volunteers, they ask themselves that question, what are you going to do with us? We want the ladder, so I think I've explained before that we moved the tower down to Battalion Two, everybody got the training. So now the volunteers, there's a dedicated truck company in our town, right? So some departments, Upper Marion's one of them, Upper Providence, Upper Moreland, I think they all kept their stipend program to keep volunteers involved, right? I would think that we could take the North Hampton approach, where they put some money in the stipend program to continue to pay for volunteers to come to training, which I think is most important, right? Because really, all we want our volunteers to do is get on the fire truck and go to training. That's what we need them to do, that's the essential functions. All the other things they do are, is awesome and much needed for the administratively running of the department, but at this point, I just need them to get on a fire truck. But that, that's the stipend, so in reality, if we were to hire eleven, then we could say, as a group, and collaborate and say, okay, we're going to get rid of stipend, or we're going to change stipend to only have four on stipends, so we get the ladder out, or we're going to use it as a training incentive. I, 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 I think I've mentioned this before, but the only question that I got ever about the proposal was from a firefighter who said, does that mean the stipend program's going away? Because I want to get my Friday nights back. So I think some volunteers rely on that stipend money, which I get, but, I mean, they'll have the opportunity to apply.
Okay. Next question is, how was the overtime calculated, on what basis was the overtime that's in here?
Was what was needed, I'm sorry, what do you mean, how was it calculated?
I mean, how many hours are you assuming before you qualify for overtime, I guess? I mean, are you assuming a forty-hour work week?
Time and a half, forty hours, yeah.
Okay, because according to the F L S A, that is not how firefighters are definitely, they're usually done on a two-week basis. So if you do it on a forty-week basis, you're going to generate a ton of overtime. But if you do it on a two-week basis, because theoretically, if you look at a calendar and you go through on a twenty-four seven, twenty-four hour seventy-two schedule, there's weeks where you're only working twenty-four hours in a week, and you're getting paid overtime. So that, that's why I'm asking, because I think we need to, we need to really understand and go back and look at how that overtime number is calculated.
Well, I wasn't doing it week by week, I was doing what it would take for, yeah, I, we have to take a look at that to verify.
Let's see. Let's see, next question.
If I could just interrupt, Lane, our fire, our police department work twelve-hour shifts. And so anything over two thousand eighty hours. And so, anything over two thousand eighty hours a year is either overtime or compensatory time. So it's the same model for fire then. It's, it's not per week, it's per-
I wasn't looking at it per, yeah, I wasn't looking at it per week. I'm just, yeah.
Go on to office supplies.
Yeah.
Ten thousand budgeted, you've spent fourteen hundred, and it's going up to fifteen thousand. Where are we expecting to buy a lot of office supplies in the last two months of the year? Thirty-four, oh three, four eleven?
No, actually, just to be as transparent and honest as possible, I added, I, when I did my twenty-twenty-five budget for this year, I added to the budget because I was anticipating that I would have had a decision about hiring, and I could have started planning for that this year, so that when we got to twenty-twenty-five, I would be able, so you're gonna see that, like, turnout gear and uniforms and those things are at a higher level than really what we're spending because I was anticipating, because turnout gear takes nine months to come in. So if I knew that, okay, you're getting eleven, then I could say, okay, let's start planning to figure this out, but unfortunately, we're not there.
Operating supplies and not office supplies?
Well, operating supplies is different. Operating supplies funds our drone program, it funds our medical program, it funds our CPR first aid, all of our training initiatives that are community-based, all come out of operating supplies.
Okay.
What, I'm sorry, sir, what, what line item were you just referencing?
Zero, three, four, eleven, two twenty, operating supplies.
Okay, thank you, I didn't hear.
And, and I got, I gotta, I gotta let you know, like, if we, these are the hot, I gave the highest estimates, not grandiose, I would never do that, but I gave the highest forecasting. I would imagine that if we hired eleven, this would be a lot less because we would be hiring part-timers and hopefully volunteers that would wanna be full-time. So they already have a set of gear, they already have a uniform. But I couldn't plan for that because I just don't know if those are the people we're gonna be hiring.
Yeah, I mean, it didn't go up very much between the zero-
I run the department as lean as possible.
See uniforms, the consulting services we talked about earlier, I think the board talked about them. Training, meetings, and conferences. I think you've mentioned the, this is, you're basically taking the whole fire department and doing training, or is there any conferences?
Well, no. So conferences, and again, we didn't go to any, I mean, I think only John went to the International Arson Investigate, I mean, Andrew and I typically, there's a conference in there for Andrew and I to go to. We didn't go this year. I didn't go because of all the budget stuff going on, I didn't wanna miss a week here. But the training is typically what we do is we bring in outside trainers, outside classes. Really, the cost for training is built into the overtime that I provided, Blaine, and that's why when you talk about hours, the hours don't match up, I get that. But we also have built overtime into firefighter, fire, fire marshal on-call is built into the overtime, fire responses for investigations, and then training. Because, you know, if we have a let, if we have fifteen people and we need to have them all trained together, at, at least eleven of them are gonna be on overtime because we'd need them to come into next shift for the twenty-four hour period. And again, we are required under our department to do a couple burns a year where we go down the fire academy. So do I anticipate we'll spend sixty thousand dollars? Again, I estimate it high because if we hire employees that don't have certain certifications, we're gonna have to send them out to get those certifications.
Yeah, I was just curious because you, you've only spent sixteen, seventeen thousand this year.
Right, and that's, and I could tell you that that's a direct result of not doing a lot of outside training because of everything that's been going on with the budget.
Okay, and that's kind of what I've suspected, but I just wanted to hear.
It's been all press budget since June, so.
Okay. So of the eleven, if you were, you're kind of centering now on the eleven hires, so what specifically in that eleven, is it two battalion chiefs and?
No battalion chiefs.
No battalion chiefs.
Four captains.
Four captains.
Three firefighters. Don't even have to create a new position. Meaning, we don't have to create the battalion chief position.
Okay.
So all of the salary benefits, it's already outlined in the current collective bargaining agreement.
So the fire captain then acts as one of the firefighters for your two and two?
I mean, that's the way we do it, that's the way we do, I mean, the fire, the, I mean, obviously, I had one, five, or six on a truck, right, but that's not gonna happen. So, yeah, the fire captain and the one interior guy will go inside. I'm sure the third guy that's supposed to be inside will be at the door. But, you know, we're gonna do what we need to do to put the fire out.
Yeah, no, I'm just trying to understand.
Yep.
The confusing part now is, when this started back in October, we were nineteen new hires, and we had this, we had a battalion chief, and then-
So that's the other, that's the other consideration to the stipend money, which, you know, is do we pay a stipend chief still? Because now, we talked all about command and control, and that's a leading cause of firefighter death, line-of-duty deaths, but we're not gonna guarantee that a chief shows up. So the captain's on his own. But in the fire service, we would call that tactical command. The captain would give a report, he'd say, I'm going inside with my interior fire crew, have the next incoming chief take command. So there are ways that we have planned around that.
Okay. So four captains, three firefighters, and you keep the current five that you have on staff?
I hope so, I hope they wanna stay.
Around the contract, and I guess this is getting, I'm not sure who to address this to. So I'm trying to understand, if you go with the twenty-four seventy-two, but you go with the eleven hires, I'm not sure how you don't have to open the contract.
No, we do.
Okay.
We do. But what I'm saying is that my perception is that the union is in support of the twenty-four seventy-two.
Okay.
So opening the contract won't cost us anything on the backside.
Okay, so that's the expectation, if everything goes according to plan, so.
Yeah, because the, the, the union leadership knows that their, I think their people want the twenty-four seventy-two, but just, it's not only a want, it's the proven statistical analysis that that's the better shift for the holistic employee.
Okay. So from a twenty-four forty-eight perspective, have you given any thought as to how you, say, you, you go twenty-four forty-eight, how do you evolve to the twenty-four seventy-two? Have you thought about that yet or not?
Well, the original phasing plan on the website was that. It was to start at the twenty-four forty-eights, and then once you're given the more people, to switch to the twenty-four seventy-twos, which would require that the contract get opened up at that time too. And again, like, I would do it if I was directed to do it, because I'll do what I'm directed to do. But I just think we did the scenarios based on the twenty-four seventy-two because that's gonna cost us the most with, with, with the, the lower shifts with keeping four on the truck.
Yeah. All right, those are all the questions I have right now.
Thank you, Homer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Jay Moszewski, Pinecrest. I came up again today. I have a suggestion that I feel can help facilitate this process, get the, the residents to understand. And I think we need to look at updating the proposal that's on the website. It's evolved, and it's hard to follow. My reference would be the proposal I put together to delay this for a month because the numbers didn't add up. Something along that format. So, you know, something where you, you know, state accurately what the problem is, numbers, et cetera. We define our goal, including amending it now to acknowledging the concerns of the residents about taxes, et cetera, keeping that down, but still meeting the goals we want. We enumerate some targets, you know, what is the target response time we want? And is it ninety percent of nine minutes or whatever? See that, and what manpower has to go to achieve that? And is it, what combination of full-time firefighters, part-time volunteers? Maybe we have a matrix or something, you know? If we've got eleven full-time, fourteen part-time, we need to make sure we have at least fifteen viable volunteers. If the fifteen viable volunteers fall down, then we need to start adding staff, or how can we address it? But something enumerated that way, our targets and getting them. You know, and then we provide all viable options. The option I mentioned at Monday night's meeting was, and I think it came up today a little bit, hey, we hire eleven, then when we meet certain criteria, we need to hire a few more, or we need to go to fifteen or nineteen total. So something that addresses that in the proposal that way. Let's see, you know, yeah. And then the other part, we gotta look, there are so many factors affecting things. You know, the CBA, camaraderie, shift changes. I mean, I did some looking, you know, twenty-four seventy-two is the ideal way to go, but again, if we were a lower Marion, we wouldn't even be having this debate, we would just hire everybody and go ahead. But we've got some budget issues. When I looked at the budget Monday night, am I correct in seeing we're running eight point four million deficit on that line? Because the one that said there, you know, it said we're gonna take eight million out of the one fund, and it's gonna drop to eleven million when I was looking at the budget, but, you know, anyway, I'm just curious how-
I think you're thinking about the capital reserve.
You know, later, but I'm just saying, you know, we, we've obviously gotta watch our money, is the point of it, so. You know, and then we can, but that's my suggestion, is that we should, you know, look at putting a good formal proposal together. Like, the one I put together was a few pages, but it did state things, and it had the supporting documents. There's a lot of timetables, it doesn't need to be in the document, but it could be an attachment to people, they wanna dig into the numbers. But I think something for the public, so they can look at it in five, ten minutes, read through, and get a thorough understanding why we're doing this, what the issues are, and here's the options we have to get it done. And to that end, my, my approach, I just put some elements together that would end up in that type of proposal. And they're certainly just a rough draft.
Jay, can I, can I make a comment about, because this, this has come up a couple times? How many volunteers do you need? Viable volunteers, right? And, and it's not, that's not the measurable part. I could have a hundred viable volunteers, but I need them to come out. So when you say, well, we need fifteen people during, for a fire, so you need to have, if you have four career guys, we need to have nine volunteers come out, that's never gonna happen during the day. Ever. So it's, it's not a measure, right? It could happen on the weekends, and it could happen at nights. I mean, in the report that's up on the, up on the website, the nine-page kind of report that we did, you know, we're not even close to seeing fifteen. And, and again, that's an NFPA standard, and how do we achieve that now? We are through mutual aid. So we are getting people there, the fifteen people, I don't know if we're meeting the nine-minute ninety percent. And again, that ninety percent doesn't mean it's a grace period, it, it, it measures outliers. But last, last meeting when I left, somebody waited for me in the parking lot and said, well, just tell me how many volunteers you need, and we'll get them. I, I've been trying for twenty years to get them.
And when I say viable, I mean volunteers that are going to show up when you need them.
Right, and so, so how, how do we, how do we capture those people in Montgomery Township that forty-three times last month dropped everything they did and said goodbye to their families for an hour? Oh, and by the way, you have stipend this week, and you gotta come to training Monday night.
Yeah.
So I, I would, I would love to use that as a measurement to say, well, how many volunteers do you need to make it work? But I think we've demonstrated that no matter how many volunteers we have, we're not ever gonna have enough.
Okay, well, then, that could be in the revised, or updated proposal, so people understand.
It's, it's, it's been in all of my reports, all my talking points. The criteria-based approach I get for an agency or an organization that is not public safety-driven, and I think criteria-based approach would be great for us. Let's make up some goals, achievements, and benchmarks. And all that's great, but our response times are terrible, and the thing is, we need to get there. So the way to, to get there is the staffing, and I would think that since our career staff has already demonstrated that they can be at a place in Montgomery Township within four minutes and thirty seconds, I mean, Andrew has them out the door in less than sixty seconds. That's the goal. The goal in-house, our goal that the career captain has set is that they need to be on the truck, lights out, on three oh nine, within sixty seconds of the call coming in. It's amazing.
Yeah, that's-
And it doesn't matter if they've been to the house a hundred times that day, it doesn't matter if it's a fall victim or a structure fire, it doesn't matter if you called because you smell something, or somebody called because they found their dad unresponsive on the floor, those guys run out of that place so fast, they don't even care. So if you were asking me what would be, what would be Bill's measure, I would think we would stick with the fire service measure. I think six minutes, six minutes, six minutes, seven minutes. I mean, seven minutes is really where we wanna be, but I think our guys have demonstrated that they can do it better.
Without looking at the data again, during the weekdays when we have a full-time crew, do we make six minutes?
Oh, gosh, yeah, we're at four, we're four, four and a half.
Okay.
Yeah.
Again, this is why I think an updated proposal done quickly, because my, one of my other questions is, on a crisis, where are we at? At what point do we not have enough people? Are you predicting that by June, if we lose a couple of volunteers or part-timers?
Here's-
It, it's urgent to me, but-
Right, here, and, and here, which I've said before, is when we look at the historical trends, it used to be, and I'm just looking at, like, in this, in the report I proposed, it said that, you know, our net loss gain over, now this still has eleven active members, right, and this is from last year. You know, our net gain of where we're at is like four members a year, or two members a year. So it does come in flows, right? It comes, it comes, sometimes we have a lot, sometimes we have a little, sometimes we have a lot. But what we're seeing, when we look at it across many years, is the little and the lot keep getting smaller. You know, and again, it's not because, and I, I know there's obviously some discussion about the environment, but again, this is the first time ever that we're gonna have a firefighter one class at our fire department, which sounds great, and I'm super excited for it. We have eleven people, so eleven new people joined, and they wanna be part of our department. But when you break that down, several of them live with their parents, a couple of them live out of town. And what we need to address is the firefighters coming from home.
Yeah.
And it's not only a factor of are they-
Preferably in Montgomery Township.
Montgomery, yes, I mean, how, it's not only a factor of a Montgomery Township resident volunteer firefighter coming from home, it's also, right, so we know that's decreased, but it's also the timing, right? So I live in the orchards, and I gotta get to Battalion One, because there's no way I'm getting to Battalion Two, but then I gotta sit at three oh nine in Stomp. So just volunteer, we're never gonna make seven minutes because you could sit at the light for ten minutes.
Yeah, and I've heard the blue light means nothing.
Oh, means nothing.
Yeah.
I, I, and, 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 you know, statistically, the second leading cause of firefighter death is accidents.
Going to the-
And the number one accident is intersection, the number two accident is driving to the firehouse. So now we're asking people to, we're asking volunteers to get there faster. Do everything you can to get to the firehouse, because we gotta make response time, so maybe they're not driving as cautiously.
So one other quick question, so one of your volunteers you mentioned lives in Shalfont, so I assume he would be out of the station by pine-
Battalion Two, right.
So he gets a call, he decides he's gonna show up, but, so the truck's not waiting for him to show up, or it may have to be waiting for him to show up before it leaves.
So what we have is, we have an app, we call it, I'm Responding. And we have two screen, well, two screens at Battalion One, one screen at Battalion Two, plus people can watch it on your phone. So when we have, I spend a lot of my life, everybody's like, oh, we're always on devices, yeah, but I'm not on social media, I'm on, every weekend, five times a weekend, on I'm Responding, making sure we have a driver, right? So the people can log up, so Vinay, he's responding on the weekend, he can log up right away and say, okay, I have three people coming, one's a driver, I know the truck's gonna get out. So, you know, we always like to roll with four on a truck.
Right.
We do not roll out of town without four on a truck. Now, we have a lot of mutual aid departments that don't follow that, and they come to town with two on a truck, or one driver and a couple probationary members that really can't do anything, because nobody wants to say that they couldn't make the response, it's a pride thing, right? But tactically speaking, if you show up with one, like, we had a building fire at Tiva this last week, right? It's last week now? Yeah, last, uh, last week, and we had a couple of our volunteer companies, mutual aid partners show up, daytime response, and one of the trucks came with two people on it. Don't come, you're ineffective. Like, we don't do manpower pools anymore, where we put everybody in a manpower pool and say, you go with you, you go with you, because we realize that kills people. So come if you have four on the truck. So we don't go out of town unless we have four on the truck, right? But on the volunteer responses, we're going with whoever we got. I mean, if we got a guy who can drive, and we can put all the kids in the back, here we go, kids, we're going on a fire truck ride, like, because we gotta show up. I mean, that's how we're running this place, you know, so.
One other question, too, you mentioned drivers, and I meant to ask you that the other day, was out of our volunteers, how many can, are allowed to drive the truck or have the right?
It's a great question. So most of our active members that live in town are also drivers. So you have to be twenty-one years old. We do not require our drivers to go to Fire One, even though we may at some point, but it would just kill the volunteer fire service because- But it would just kill the volunteer fire service because up until recently, you had some drivers who didn't have Fire One. Our most active member, John, who's not with us in town right now, he doesn't have Fire One. So we're trying to make it easier to get drivers.
Do they need a CDL?
No, no CDL. So our driver training program, we didn't have one for a while. Thank God we implemented one because we're having a lot of accidents, but our driver training program says you have to have EVAC, which is 16 hours. Pump one, which is 16 hours. So 30, so two weekend classes. And then 20 hours of drive time, five, no, 25 hours of drive time, 10 at night, 15 during the day. And then we have a written test and a competency based test. So you go with the driver trainer. We have a whole slew of driver trainers. Andrew is one of the driver trainer certifiers. And then we do, everybody has to refresh every year.
Like I say, they, they have to put so many hours a year in, I would assume.
Yeah, we don't do hours, we do annual refreshers. So it's an eight hour refresher one year, and then we run the whole 16 hour. And what we've actually done is Vinay, awesome, hosted a train to trainer last year. Through our insurance company, VFIS. So now we have guys in-house that can certify people. Because we're, you know, we're just trying to get drivers, so. So if you don't want to be a volunteer firefighter and crawl down a hallway, but you want to help, come be a driver and we'll get you driving.
I'm 66 years old with two replaced knees, so it's not going to.
And you're probably younger than some of the drivers we got, so.
I know they're in their 50s, but, but yeah, I understand that's a concern. So I still go back to my original thing in the beginning. I think this whole process could benefit from. A document, something succinct, so everybody can understand, you know, what the options are and so forth. And written in like, here's the problem, here's the considerations, here's our goal, and here's the supporting info.
Yeah. And I think all, I, I mean, you have mentioned that before, the reorganization of the website. That the, the reason I have gotten so much feedback on the website that I was just trying to manage it all. And I'm not in charge of the website. But from the electrical fire debacle, so we, you know, we, we went up and put all of our calls on by month, by type. So you could see how it changed with coding through the, at first not because it was an error. The sample size.
Yeah, I understand that.
Yeah, right. Like we've heard, we've had errors in the, in the numbers. Well, we didn't have errors in the numbers. It was a labeling error. And we didn't specifically define sample size. So. Yeah, I mean, we could make, uh, we could make like a, a highlights top at the top of the website.
It's something somebody can go through in five, 10 minutes tops, you know, get the essence. If they want to pull in the supporting documents, the tables they can, but something they could go through. You know, and I, I did nitpick like reasons we're doing this. One of them was because fires double in 30 seconds. That belongs down in, you know, what was it called? The.
That's a scientific fact.
On sign teams matter. The same with Flashover. It's not the reason we're doing it. The reason we're doing it is because of manpower. We're not making our response times and emergency calls are going up. Those to me are the three reasons.
Yeah, there's three, but I mean, the 30 seconds and, and just so you know, like. It's, that's a health and safety thing, right? Like because if, if career guys are getting there in four minutes and volunteers are getting there in nine minute average, not the outliers, which I underlaid. If a volunteer is getting there in 18 minutes to a house fire, they are in much greater risk. And we know that our types of homes that we have in Montgomery, the time for collapse is between seven and 17 minutes.
Yeah, but that's incorporate to me isn't the response time factor. I want to get the response time down.
Right.
Nine minutes, I've heard, you know, six minutes.
I think six, seven minutes is the sweet spot.
Yeah.
I mean, NFPA says seven, so.
We wanted to be as fast as possible.
I want to be there as fast and safe as possible.
Yeah. So we're, I'm going to just sort of fucking.
Thanks, thank you, Jack.
Thank you.
Carla, hello, Zach Lansdale. So thank you for having the special session. I want to reiterate a few things and then I have a very hard ask of the supervisors. Because quite frankly, I've been following this for some time and I'm beginning to feel like a hamster on a wheel. So the first hard ask I'm going to ask you is we have an aging population in Montgomery Township. And they do not do QR codes. They do not do webs. In the September township meeting, the chair of the supervisors acknowledged this. But it took until November 1st to get a card with the QR code out to the residents. That to me is completely unacceptable. You're a customer service organization. You need to invest in a brochure where particularly 70 plus year residents can look at it. They don't want texts, they don't want emails, they don't want a web, and they don't want a QR code. And that's the population that is most impacted by a tax increase. And that's the population that is concerned about having to leave the township because of taxes. So I would ask that you expeditionsly put together a mailer. I know it's money, but this is a very, very sensitive issue for our aging population. They need to touch and feel and read and not be directed to a website to get the information. The second ask I have for you is I agree with updating the web and the proposals. But it needs to be done quickly because this is getting drawn out quite a bit. Personally, I would like just approve seven new hires, get your metrics and your benchmarks in place, see if they improve. If not, a year later, add a few more to your 11, whatever, whatever. And in your proposals, I want to know, how do you pull those employees out of the system if you don't need them? Because if you go big and hire too many and you don't have that withdrawal plan in place, then taxpayers are stuck with the cost forever. And I think you're obligated to show how you'll withdraw the staff as opposed to just keep using them for other things that are nice to haves. As opposed to essentials. Thank you.
Thank you, Carla.
Another question, maybe two. So from the agenda, there's no action being taken here today. It's just.
No. So, yeah, this was, and this kind of will answer, I think Denise says it. We, we, I don't know ever to have had a special meeting at 10 o'clock on a, it's all, it's always. Yeah, it's a, it is a first for me in, in this role, but because believe it or not, the majority of our board have full-time jobs. So, you know, this is, this is a little unusual for us. But the, the, the process today was to just come and discuss and ask questions for clarity on any numbers. That we wanted to, to talk about and get clear and additional feedback from whoever was able to attend. We will be making a decision November 24th. So that's our normal scheduled meeting every second and fourth Monday at seven o'clock. Is our meeting. So the goal is that we will be deciding then, making a decision so that it can go. Because it has to be advertised. The budget, the budget has to be advertised for 20 days, I believe it is 20 days. So nothing, we weren't.
I didn't, I didn't think so, but I just wanted to check when I printed out everything, I didn't miss a page.
And if I could just add something, Madam Chair, we did check with the solicitor's office that your action on the 24th, which is authorizing the advertisement of the budget.
Right.
Would meet the 20 day requirement. We would be able to then adopt the budget on December 15th as planned.
Right.
If it didn't.
Say it the right way.
So we, you know, we've made sure that we were, that it matched the second class township code and that we wouldn't be doing anything out of order.
Yeah, we just wanted to make sure from a timing perspective.
But to clarify, the decision that is being made today is to advertise the budget and that budget.
No, we're not, we're not making that decision.
We're making that decision today.
No, today was just, today's just a review because the fact that it is a 10 o'clock meeting.
Right.
I spoke with the chair and it was my recommendation after speaking with the solicitor's office that you, you vote to authorize it, your normal public meeting on the 24th.
On the 24th and we're still going to have enough time?
Yeah. Just because then it's transparent, it's your normal meeting, the agenda and the packet would get posted.
We didn't want it to be an off meeting.
Sort of time, the board wanted more time for, to look at the numbers, to ask questions. For us to put another set of eyes on them and then to hear feedback from whatever residents came out. But yeah, the 24th would be, my plan is to get your consensus as to which scenario the majority of the board wants to support for fire. And then that would be blended into the budget as well as just do a brief overview of the other funds, similar to what I started to do on Monday evening. And I would probably, for the benefit of the people there, just do another quick PowerPoint of where our millage is compared to everybody else. How we measure up with the other two taxing authorities, just for everybody's education. And also if, if you were inclined to give us any kind of direction at that meeting, then we could also update the website. Because I believe right now in terms of, you can put your address in, and this was done through our GIS, which I can't thank the board enough for allowing us to have that position. She put it in that you can type in your address. It tells you what your current tax is and what, under the scenario, the original scenario, what it would look like. So for example, if the board's consensus was the 11 or the seven, we would adjust the millage then to either one or 1.15. And that would obviously give a new number for people. And we can also update the chart that's on there that sort of has, I think, six to eight, you know, streets that are in different subdivisions in the township. We can update that as well.
So just so I'm clear on this, on the 24th, you will present the kind of official budget? Or is it still going to be the four scenarios as part of that? Or are you going to take a vote on which scenario?
It would still be the four scenarios, sir. And then I would ask the board for a motion.
As to which one?
Official vote. And then based on that, so those scenarios will not affect the other funds that are going to be presented to the board. The fire fund is a standalone fund, is not relying on money from other funds or any kind of transfers. That's why we're talking about the different scenarios with accompanying millage.
Okay.
So to, I, I think, is that clear for you? So the 24th, one of the scenarios will, will be voted on.
That'll be a line item on the budget. You'll see, you know, decision on fire.
Be public comment and there'll be public comments around what y'all are going to select.
There's always public comment before the board votes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Hi, John Dale, Montgomery Township. Just two real quick questions for you on the budget. The first. This is a budget, so I assume when you went in and did the numbers, that the, all the expenditures assumed everyone's hired January 1st and it's a full year? Is that kind of how this works?
Correct. So it will be less sound depending on how fast we can mobilize.
Right. Because the earliest is going to be probably right after Thanksgiving, right? That you could start.
I would hope that that's the earliest we could start moving. I mean, we're scheduled to test. Well, that, I mean, we're not doing battalion chiefs anymore, so that I'll wipe that through, but I think we could get people going. So I understand your question, like, you know, that, that, that it's done per the year and we're not going to start till whenever. I get that.
So my question is, do you need 1.15 increase for 2026?
Based on what?
With that excess, because if, if you don't get everyone hired until halfway through the year, let's say, there's, obviously we've collected taxes. Or did the collection of taxes start later? How's that work?
So based on what the chief is explaining, if the board authorizes, say, seven on the 24th, he would move forward. He'd, he'd know that come December, they're going to vote that budget in place because they've authorized its advertisement. He'd be able to start putting things in place. If in fact he has part timers who are interested, then he would be able to move forward without the normal. Some of the hiring process, they could very well be in position to be hired in January. Because they're already part-time employees, so it would just be.
Soon and when we do taxes in March or.
Well, March is when the bill goes out. So, but it's for the year, yes. So we really don't get any revenue in until April, when the first people start paying under the discount period.
Obviously prior to that.
Yes, yes.
And we could maybe take till June to get the people in, right?
It won't be June.
I would just say.
It will not be June.
We talked about this, the three of us internally, and based on what we're understanding with statements that part timers have made. We do, we really do. And to, to play with the millage for one month or a month and a half, I don't want people.
Six months is a different story.
Absolutely. And that's what I asked him. I said, I asked him about that. Right. Because then what the understanding is if we did it for six months and then next fall, we would be saying, we'd have to explain to everybody. This wasn't smoke and mirrors. We only put this millage in because we're anticipating a six one hire date. But we really think they're going to be here if the board moves in this direction sooner rather than later in 2026.
So I'm, I know you have future expenditures also. I think I saw it in one of the attachments that, you know, it's four point. If we did with the 11, four point, you know, $2 million for next year in expenditures. I think, or revenues, I'm sorry, expenditures is close to that. Going forward, as you, as you move out in 2026, 27, 28, obviously costs are going to go up. I think the only place looking at where your revenue sources are that you can take from is pretty much going to be property taxes again, correct?
Uh, no, we could, there is additional money that we can take from our 511 taxes, which are earned income tax and our local services tax if, if need be. Yes, our earned income tax has steadily grown. It's, it's, I mean, we have some years where, you know. Pandemic, it didn't come in as high, obviously. There were people who maybe in the past had overtime opportunities that they didn't have during that. But we have such a diverse community in terms of where they're working that we've seen just a steady growth, but not anything exponential. We don't see, we don't see dips and.
They basically, do you think as we go out four or five years, if you, if you, as you looked at them, I know it's tough looking at everything, but. That millage is going to stay around where it is, whatever this decision.
For fire purposes, yes. Yes. I can't speak to the, obviously the rest of the township operations, but definitely for fire. Our last two, and I said this after a lot of people left, our last two tax increases. One was directly related to a borrowing we did. So we had borrowed $15 million at 1.76% in 2021. Because when the board came in, we discovered we didn't have a capital improvement plan. We call it a capital investment plan because it's an investment not only in our assets, but in our community. So that included public works, trucks, the fire trucks. We bought a ladder truck for the fire department. We have two more apparatus. The majority of our traffic signals needed to be upgraded, emergency preemption, so that when an ambulance or fire police come to an intersection, they can push the button and it changes. As they're approaching. So there were a whole host of things that needed to be done. The second increase related directly to our capital reserves. Because we are not seeing obviously the build out that we did in the past. So we don't have money coming in from developers that are offsetting our capital. So we had to have another funding stream. And I believe at the time, Ms. Bamford was chair and she asked if we could look at millage. That would start a systemic replacement in our capital. So right now, part of our millage that the residents are being charged, it's 2.94 mils, part of it goes right to capital. About 853,000 a year to, and that's for our roads and our stormwater and everything else. And then additionally, when we borrowed the money, we also refinanced the rec center debt. And we found out there was no revenue stream for the rec center to cover the debt. Operationally, they can pay for themselves, but they cannot cover the debt. So the board at that time, you know, approved that millage increase to incorporate that as well. We have not come into them and asked them for a tax increase for our overall operation since I've been here.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Good morning. Bruce Whiteman, Montgomery Walk. It's good to be here. Thank you for all that you guys do. I think the lady here that said the head in the sand, I was that too. And I think a lot of Montgomery Township residents can have their head in the sand because it's managed very well. We know that if you call the police, they're going to be there. If you call the firemen, they're going to be there. We really appreciate that. The charts on the web, I think I should know this, but. So my particular property, I spoke last time, calculated to just over $13 a month for me and my property. Is that based on the 11? The 19, okay.
Going to be lower.
So it'll go lower. Okay. Thank you for that clarification. As far as going 12, I'm sorry, 2472. That is roughly eight workdays a month. 24, 48 would be 10. So if you calculate the hours annually based on the 2880 that you said before, it's 2,300 or so for the 2472. So how does the overtime work when there are only 2,300 hours on shift?
For the 2472s, I mean, we're hoping there's no overtime other than training expenses and shift coverage. You know, but which we would try to fill with part timers. Before we brought, which we do now, the standard practice is now is try to get a part timer in. If a part timer can't come in, then to keep four on the truck. But we wouldn't have the open shifts or the mandatory overtime to make up for that. Because, you know, we actually, we don't have a minimum, there's no minimum staffing in the contract. We keep 24, we keep the four on the truck because that's what we know works and, and, and that's what the OSHA requirement is to in, to out and what NFPA. and what NFPA says. Um, you know, we would like to keep part-timers involved. Um, so that's, yeah, that's, that's, but with the twenty-four forty-eights, and this is the issue that Upper Moreland is having right now. They're trying to get more part-timers, is because they're mandating overtime for their guys, because they don't have enough guys to fill the shifts. So a lot of the guys are, you know, working their regular twenty-four forty-eight shift, which is, as we talked about, covered under the uh, the um Police and Fire Act, but they're mandating them that they have to work on the weekends, weekends are not scheduled to work. Uh, because they can't get part-timers to come in and they need somebody on the fire truck, so.
Right, so if you, if the eleven is approved, you're gonna have how many firemen at both firehouses?
Just one firehouse, we're gonna have four working during the day, or on the twenty-four hour shift.
So then a call comes in, four jump on the truck, nobody's here, uh, are there fill-ins, do, are there backfills?
The only time there's backfills, uh, which is in the collective bargaining agreement, is um, is if there's a structure fire in town, then, then the, the career guys will come in. If we have enough, we try to, you know, we, during the day, it's really tough during the week to get volunteers. So we usually bring a mu, another municipality in to cover us. Um, especially if we have a fire in town, uh, that's just, that's just part of the business, you have a fire in town, a mutually aid company comes in, they cover you. We do that for other municipalities, the career guys don't do covers, but the volunteers do. The thing that you, you really are asking for a lot when our career staff goes to a mutually aid fire. And now we're calling it a mutually company to cover our town, cause we don't have enough volunteers to cover in town, so it's chess every day. What it is, yeah.
Yeah, I understand that, my, I told you before, my son was in Geneva, so there's three towns on the Fox River, St. Charles, Geneva, Batavia. And they had a working relationship where if they couldn't cover the firehouse when they were out on a call, somebody came from the other town, so.
Yeah, and one of the things that's been really nice that we've been working on doing is that most of the time, if one of us is, has a fire in the North Penn area, all of us are there, so it's not just like, okay, Montgomery has a fire and Lans, it's, it's up at the top end of town. Somebody asked last week about, you know, our Monday night, what do you do about five points? Well, we have mutually aid system and it's based on closest apparatus to the box, um, to the address, so. But, you know, uh, what we've been doing is, okay, Montgomery has a fire, like Mitzvah Circle. And Mitzvah Circles, fire was an exterior, fire went on the interior, but it was very labor-intensive because of the fact that there was a lot of things that needed to be unpacked from the trailer and the warehouse that were involved. So we kind of stood up a regional task force, right? Like, all right, we're gonna bring in a company, but they're gonna cover Montgomery Lansdale and North Penn, since all of you are operating at a fire. So we're trying to do everything we can to make sure things are covered. Uh, but mutually aid is part of it, I mean, I wish we got one call at a time, but especially during a storm. You know, we could have twenty calls at once, and there is no mutually aid, because everybody else is on their own. So then we prioritize what we're gonna go to, and uh, I think Vinay, Adam and I run from like chickens with our heads cut off. But um, that's just the reality of the business.
Right, so is the, looking at the scenarios here, is the nineteen off the table, is that?
Yeah, I would say.
Okay, but the website info right now is still the nineteen. All right, thank you for those clarifications.
Okay, anyone else? Well, first of all, thank you for everyone, some folks have left, but thank you very much for the feedback, thanks for the questions, the comments. Um, vitally important topic, um, so as of the twenty, the next time, I guess we'll be talking about this. Be on the twenty-fourth of this um month and um making some final decisions then, so thank you, everyone. I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Any public comment, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.